Commissioner Flesher.
Good morning. We're going to go ahead and call the Tuesday, June—Kim? Can you turn these on?
There it is.
Okay. We're going to go ahead and call the Tuesday, June 4th, Commission Meeting to Order. We'll start the meeting with a moment of silent reflection for our first responders and members of the Armed Forces. That will be followed by an invocation by Leslie Swan, our lovely Supervisor of Elections, and followed by the Pledge of Allegiance by Bill DeBrol County Attorney. If everybody would please rise.
Lord God, Creator of Heaven and Earth, we pause at the opening of this gathering to give thanks for all the blessings which you have provided us individually and collectively. We thank you, Lord God, for the freedom to meet together and discuss the needs of our slice of paradise here in Indian River County. Lord, we thank you for those who have a willing heart to assume the responsibility to lead and direct the affairs and business of Indian River County and to serve in the sacred public trust as commissioners. James 1:5 states, "If anyone desires wisdom, let them ask of God, and he will give it." We ask that you graciously grant our elected officials wisdom to govern amid the conflicting interests and issues of our times, a sense of welfare and true needs of our people, a keen thirst for righteousness, confidence in what is good and fitting, the ability to work together in harmony even when there is honest disagreement, and personal peace in the lives and joy in their task. We pray for the agenda set before us today. Please give us an assurance of what would please you and what would benefit those who live and work in and around our beloved county. Please be with our first responders and our military serving our country. We ask all these things in the name of our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. All right, Commissioners. The only addition or deletion that I need to make is Item 5B, which is a proclamation honoring Roger Harrington on his retirement. I understand that he's not feeling well and is unable to be here, so we'll make sure he gets a copy of that. Other than that, are there any other additions or deletions?
Madam Chair, move approval.
Second. We have a motion and a second. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. And with that, we will move on to Proclamations and Presentations. We do have a proclamation honoring David May on his retirement from the Indian River County Sheriff's Office. This will be presented by Commissioner Flesher.
Thank you, Madam Chair. There is David May. My former colleagues. I will tell you that there are a few people here to help support this proclamation and retirement as they come down. We appreciate them being here. You know, David, there's no true definition of a good cop, okay? Even Wikipedia doesn't get it right. But we all know that if you treat people fairly, with respect and dignity in whatever you're doing, you're going to be a good cop. And you have exemplified that, whether it was when people were the guests of the sheriff in the jail or out on the road. You always had people's back. You were always right there, 10-8. And I'll tell you what, having worked with you, I appreciate it with the CNT. It's not mentioned, but you've done quite a bit, and it shows because so many of your colleagues have shown to be here with you. Thank you. Madam Chair, thank you. And I'll present the proclamation as follows, honoring David May on his retirement from Indian River County Sheriff's Office. Whereas David May is retiring from Indian River County Sheriff's Office effective June 7th, 2024, and whereas David May began a law enforcement career in 1997 and has served with distinction for over 26 years, working diligently under four sheriffs to protect and serve the citizens of Indian River County in the state of Florida. Whereas David May during his 26-year law enforcement career has served in many capacities, including Corrections Deputy, Law Enforcement Deputy, and School Resource Deputy. And whereas, over his tenure, David received many acknowledgements and commendations for his efforts, including Going the Extra Mile, Corrections Deputy of the Year, Honorable Service, and Exceptional Duty. And whereas David's remarkable dedication to his profession has earned him the appreciation of Sheriff Eric Flowers and all those who he has served or had the honor of working with. Now therefore be proclaimed by the Board of County Commissioners of Indian River County, Florida, that the Board acknowledges the contributions that David has made to the citizens of Indian River County during the successful law enforcement career and wishes him a happy and prosperous retirement due to the adopted this fourth day of June 2024, and it is signed by all five county commissioners. Thank you all. David. That's it? Well, I mean, it works, but I'm sure there's a lot more. 26 years.
Joe, it's actually 29 and a half years.
We started together.
Yeah, I worked at St. Lucy before I found my home here. So 29 and a half years. But I got to say, and I thought about what to say, and you know, the guys in my unit know that I'm usually never at a loss for words, but to put it simply, it's been a great career. I told my wife, I wish that I went to School Resource sooner because I love, you know, the kids and elementary and everything, but she reminded me that my years of service before going to School Resource is what made School Resource so great, and the relationships I built with the kids, the parents, the staff. And in 16 days, my wife and I will celebrate 33 years married. And— I don't know how she put up with me, but behind every good man is a woman, a good woman. And I just want to thank her for being here and sticking by me in the good days and the bad days. And it's been a great career. I have no regrets. And welcome to Home Depot. What can I help you find today? Oh, I'm sorry. Hey, just want to thank you guys for taking time out of your day today to recognize David May. And of course, Roger Harrington, who couldn't be here. We have some of our Corrections folks in the back, so I want to thank them for coming out to recognize Roger as well. David has been an absolutely incredible asset to our agency. He's done amazing things in School Resource. I can tell you that his school is absolutely going to be sad to see him go. They're already prepared and are very much going to miss him. And I'm going to miss him at the football games at the corner, barking out at the folks. I know a lot of people got a kick out of all the different things that he had to say out there at the football game. So at the last football game, I actually said, "Are you going to come back and volunteer to do this?" And he said, "Absolutely not." So he is serious about this. He will not be coming back. But we appreciate your service, Dave, and thank you for all that you've done. Thank you, guys. Madam Chair, Commissioners, if we may, after this, can we do a real quick presentation by Sergeant Garrison of a challenge coin to Deputy May and a presentation of a plaque from Sergeant Roderick Smith?
Oh, well, we can do that now if you want, or what would you like? Y'all do your thing.
All right, so real quick, we got you with a plaque. Football games, you would annoy people with the stuff you would say, but it was one thing that always stood out. And I'm glad you really got to let us know this is happening. When you hear the band play, and you always yell, "Hey, Mike, Sarge, band it on boom!" So we present you with this plaque, from School Resource, and it says, "The band is only..."
David, we also got you the challenge coin from the unit. Again, it's been an honor working with you, like I said, all the years, in the force of School Resource, but just being able to, like we don't realize how close we get into School Resource Unit, we have a lot of camps we go to, and we kind of last, man.
Oh, yeah.
Like, we just, we go all the time, we rag on each other, and I'm going to miss you, man. I'm going to miss you, man. It's great. I'm not going to miss anybody else.
Got that wide lens? Hold on, guys. Hold on. Do we have Mrs. May come to the podium? She's part of the family. Okay. You said they had to put up with you.
Ryan. I know you're not a family yet, but you're almost there.
Uh-oh.
Congratulations.
All right. All right, so there's no minutes for approval. The next item is informational items. The event calendar is attached, so everybody can check out all the fun events going on in Indian River County. With that, we'll move on to consent agenda. Commissioners, would anybody like to pull anything from consent?
Madam Chairman, I'd like to pull 8K and 8P.
8K.
And 8P.
8P.
Madam Chairman, I'd like to pull 8J.
8J. Okay. Anybody else? Anybody from the public wish to pull anything from consent?
8S.
8S?
Sir, is that 8F or 8S?
S.
S.
S is Sierra.
All right. All right, Commissioners? Anything else? If not, we will take a motion.
Madam Chair, move approval as amended.
All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Flesher with a second by Commissioner Ehrman. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And Commissioners, we're just going to take these in order, so we'll start with 8J. Commissioner Moss.
Yes, thank you. 8J has to do with the Tourist Development Council budget recommendations for the coming year. The—I think that the work being done by the chambers, Sebastian and Indian River County, it's good work. I enjoyed the video that Mr. Ben Ehrman made. I thank Sebastian. Chamber of Commerce is doing some very innovative things. However, I think the vetting process for these dollar amounts is incomplete in that 75% of this budget will not be publicly reviewed by the Tourist Development Council until August 21st, I believe it is. And these are tourist tax dollars, but they're still tax dollars. So I think, from my perspective, we have a fiduciary responsibility to ensure proper oversight of these expenditures. And it's changed quite a lot. The history of it, it goes back to—and I was looking at the resolutions last night, it goes back to 1989. And at that point, it was $30,000 that was given to the Chamber of Commerce. And interestingly, it was the Vero Beach hyphen Indian River County Chamber of Commerce. Today, on this budget for the Indian River County Chamber of Commerce, it's almost $1 million. It's $926,000—no, I'm sorry, that was the request. The recommendation is—oh, still the same, $926,748. And for Sebastian Chamber, it's $252,143, which is 75% of the total of $1,575,491. That will not be reviewed until August, publicly reviewed by the Tourist Development Council. That's what I'm talking about. The others—the other 25%, the smaller agencies, were reviewed prior. So that being said, I think that we're in need of a public review on this. I probably want to revisit some of the procedures, given that this goes back 30 years. And in a way, you know, I think we did a good job in reviewing Children's Services, and this is, you know, along that line. We want to be sure that the accountability is thorough and, you know, that we have fulfilled our fiduciary responsibilities. So I am not supporting this at this time for the reasons stated. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Commissioner Flesher.
May I comment? You know, again, as pointed out, this is done by resolution, and it is—has been the operating procedure since—prior to 1990. At a time when we could reflect that perhaps the tourist tax generation, a user tax, a tax that is paid by those who visit us heads to beds, that tax was under $500,000. It was a very minimal number. And the minimal number was why there was a minimal distribution. We have to look at the economy of scale and look at the fact that four cents on every head that hits the bed as a tourist in Indian River County generates those dollars. This past year, we generated over $4 million. So now you have to put that in perspective. And I believe that the Board, which I am the current chairman—I know you served as chairman as well. I've done it for many years. You did it for many years. I believe it's done accurately and fairly, and the proof is in the result. Not only that, the reason why we don't vet out the—because by direction and by our resolution, the—our chambers get a designated percentage. What they have done with that percentage, and their presentation requires several hours of presentation to the Board, to the general public in this very chamber, and that will be done at the very next meeting. It is done by design. It hasn't been called into question, and it has, again, shown great results. The Chamber has done many innovative manners to promote this great county, and I remind everyone that we do not have a theme park here. We do not have a major attraction that people clamor from Oklahoma, Wyoming, New York—imagine that—New Jersey, Connecticut. They come here because of what we have and the promotion that is done to entice them, to encourage them, to share what we have here in Indian River County. And it works. Obviously, $4 million is—at four cents a hand, just imagine at four pennies, and not all of it goes directly to the tourist development promotion. There is an equation that is distributed for our sand and other debt service. So once again, I'm not beset by the fact that the presentation is made later on because I invite everyone, including the Commissioner, to come to see the presentation as to what the chambers are doing to show how great a place this is and what we do, and it's an honor to serve. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. And just to follow up on what you have to say, I think, Commissioner Moss, it's important to note that by resolution, both chambers are designated as the tourism arm of the county. And as the process goes, while they might not give their presentation until August, that presentation is still given before the final budget approval. And it—they have to and have submitted their application that does show what and how they intend to spend those dollars. So it's all in there. If you wanted to look at it, you could certainly ask for that. I believe it was in the packet that was presented to the TDC. The only thing is they don't do their presentation because that meeting goes so long, and by resolution, they're already given that 70%. So it's more of a trying to ensure that everything moves along properly, but that information is there if you wanted to seek it out.
I don't know that that resolution was intended simply as a pass-through, but I will certainly look at that.
That's what the resolution states, so you're welcome to pull that one as well for information. Commissioners, we will need—if there's no further discussion, a motion one way or another on this.
Madam Chair, move approval.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed?
Opposed, nay.
Motion carries, four to one, with Commissioner Moss dissenting. With that, we'll move on to 8K. Commissioner Ehrman.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I'm just pulling this for conversation purposes only, just to let everyone know that this is the general—the first stage of the general obligation bonds for the—the conservation bond that was passed back in 2022. This was the first $25 million for that, and I just wanted to give you a quick update to say that we have—the ELAP Committee has reviewed seven properties in the first stage, and they'll move into the second stage, and we have 17 more in the queue for review. So that gives us 24 total pieces of conservation property so far that have been sent to us, that have been nominated. Doesn't mean all of them will get through. The buyer may not want to sell. They could have been nominated by somebody else unbeknownst to them, but staff reaches out to those potential nominees to see if they're interested in selling it, if it meets the criteria. So with that, really, that's the only reason I wanted to pull it, to let y'all know where we're at with the fact that we have 24 properties in the queue right now with this. So with that, Madam Chairman, unless there's any questions, I'll make a motion to approve. Second.
All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Ehrman with a second by Commissioner Flesher. And if anybody would like to nominate properties, they can do so through the website, correct?
Yes. If you go to the—on the website, they can type in ELAP, or it says it in the queue. It says you go to ELAP, and people can— it says you go to ELAP, and people can review the properties and what's there.
Wonderful. All right. If there's no further discussion, there is a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. With that, we'll move on to 8P. Commissioner Ehrman, I believe you pulled this one as well.
Eight, eight P. Yes, ma'am. Amendment number one to the Atkins Realist Work Order for Stormwater Storage Treatment Facility. Yes, I was, when I saw this, I was, I also agree with staff's recommendation, just to only pull out a minimal amount of EMDLs for the, for the lagoon and the sixteen and a half million dollar bid to build the cost, it looks like not bid, a cost to create a stormwater treatment facility is a little bit expensive for the return on the investment that we'll get. I just want to encourage County Administrator and her staff, that we need to, now that we're, Natural Resources is up and running, and we've got extra people, that we kind of prioritize this, of looking at what projects we can do further with, with regards to stormwater and treatment and things of that nature. I know there's, we've talked about in reference to doing something by the West Waste Water Treatment Plant, that's been brought up. The initial project I brought back a couple of years ago was moving water west through the St. John's Improvement District, but that, that's kind of been the St. John's River Water Management District folks kind of, looked at it as maybe we ought to, they encourage more stormwater storage treatment facilities, which I agree, I think that's a better approach. So my thing is, was just to bring this to more of a public attention, that we need to concentrate on this a little more and make these projects a priority. So with that being said, unless anybody has any questions, I'll make a motion to approve staff recommendation.
Second.
All right. There is a motion by Commissioner Ehrman with a second by Commissioner Fleischer. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, next is 8S. I believe Mr. Lunsford pulled that. Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair. As many of you know, I am an institutionalist. I do believe that we have processes for a reason. The simple reason I want to pull this item is because I would like the Commission to discuss. I think any decision to, on any aspect of taxation is one that is consequential to the community. I don't want to alarm any of my friends here from the school district. This is not a tacit effort to block this particular resolution. I simply think that it is something that should be discussed, given its tremendous consequence to the citizens of this county. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Moore, did you want to add to that?
Yeah, let's discuss.
Okay.
Thank you. At our last school board meeting, our Board unanimously approved, what's in front of you now, you probably haven't seen it, it was like eleven forty-seven PM, but nonetheless, we're here today to continue what the county has put in place since two thousand and eight, I believe. And when you, the voters approve something, it's a promise. It's a promise that the school district makes to its community to uphold and improve the school system. This millage looks at three specific areas. One is recruiting and retaining high teacher pay. And if you read the paper across the state, there are superintendents and boards searching for employees, not here in the school district of Indian River County. When you look at the last four years, we've gone from twenty-eighth below the teacher average in teacher pay to sixth in the state in teacher pay, above the state average. The five districts that are above us, four of them, five, no, four of them are still below us in average teacher pay. They've actually done a good job of increasing teacher pay, but we have been extremely aggressive in what we have agreed with our teachers' union. We think we're going to go up even higher to be one, four or five in the state in terms of teacher pay. We don't have a recruitment problem, because we focus in on retention. We're very, very solid there. Safety and security. We take this very, very seriously, and we are the shiny example across the state of Florida under the leadership of Mr. Teskey, supported by Mr. Seymour. Counties are constantly coming here to evaluate the systems and structures that we have in place in order to ensure each and every single one of our students walk into the schools, they feel safe, they feel comfortable, whether it is our state-of-the-art metal detectors, whether it is the significantly increased number of cameras that we've put in place, whether it is the security monitors that are there, whether it is the vape technology that senses the vapes, we are on top of it each and every single moment, upholding the promise that we made to our community. And then finally, integrating technology. Four years ago, we did not have the technology that we needed to be in place to prepare our students. And today, we have a one-to-one initiative, meaning every single student from third, second grade above receives a device, and they have that device, which is updated and char, and replaced until they graduate, which allows them to take the device home, allows us to give the hotspot, so if they don't have internet access at home, we can provide that. If you walk into our classrooms now, you're seeing high levels of interactive boards being used, that students can ultimately be prepared when they graduate from school. At the end of the day, the school district of Indian River County is the state's most improved school system. It has improved from thirty-eighth to thirteenth in state rankings. No other district has done that. And our collective work is to provide our community with world-class education and a place each and every single person can be proud of. Our goal is not just to be the top thirteen, based on the results that we have now. We know that we're going to continue to soar up the rankings. And if we're all about supporting and creating a community, we can't do that unless everyone embraces better schools or everybody's business. And this is simple a continuation. And we, as a district and as a school board, have taken the ability and compassion to ensure that we are great stewards of the people's money. Our fund balance is the highest it's ever been. Our ratings, four and a half years ago when this was approved, it were not, were all negative, now they're all positive. We have done an absolutely outstanding job of being a great steward of the people's money. The best way I can highlight that is to draw a comparison. When you look at Martin County, Martin County, we all know is the exact same size as us. They have the same millage in place, but they also claim the sales tax, additional sales tax on their community. They receive thirteen million more dollars than our children receive in this county. Yet, when it comes to outcomes, they're looking up at us. They are a B district, we are an A district, and we will continue along that path, making sure that we will be fiscally responsible with every dollar. And every promise that we make, we will uphold and ensure that this community has a school district that is in fact an A, with A schools, that ensures when a student walks into our schools, parents can feel safe, they know they have the technology they need, and they have quality educators in front of them. So we thank you for sending this to the voters, and we thank you for your support. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioners?
Madam Chair, by design, we're, we're placing this, we're recommending to place this on the ballot at the direction of the school board, per the legislation that is mandating that it's on the November ballot. This, this motion will place that opportunity to put it in the taxpayers' hands as to their decision as to if this goes forward. I just wanted to be, make it clear that we're not pushing this, pulling this, we are facilitating this request and ensuring that the voters have the right to make their decision for the betterment of the children and the operation of the schools for the future of Indian River County.
Correct. It's more ministerial in
Yes.
... nature for us. They asked us to place it on the ballot. We are the ones that have to allow that to happen, and so that's what, that's what's going on with this issue. Commissioner Moss.
Thank you. I just wanted to say, I was, I checked last night for my own information to see how the school board had voted on this, so I was watching the video of that meeting that went, I think, more than six hours, and, yeah, unlike ours, it's not divided by matter. So you, you have to struggle a bit to find, you know, where that, where that vote was. So I ended up watching, I'll just say, quite an amount of that meeting. And so it's not necessarily unanimous on a wide range of matters, but it was a solid, unanimous vote on this particular matter. So I can, I can say that without reservation, having done my, my homework on that. God bless you all.
All right, Commissioners?
Motion, motion approved.
All right. I have a motion by Commissioner Lore with a second by Commissioner Fleischer. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. All right, with that, we will move on to our public hearing. This, while they are getting set up, this is going to be a public hearing, which, on Community Baptist Church Inc.'s request for special exception use and site plan approval for a K-12 private school. This is a quasi-judicial hearing, so you guys know the drill, we'll go through our quasi-judicial checklist. The parties to the proceeding are Indian River County and Community Baptist Church. Commissioners, I'm going to ask you to please disclose any ex parte communications, site visits, or independent investigations. Commissioner Lore?
None.
Commissioner Fleischer?
Madam Chair, none that I'm aware of.
I did have a phone call from Mr. Klein, who had some concerns about the project, and I invited him to come to the hearing so we could convey those, but other than that, none. Commissioner Ehrman?
None.
All right. Please confirm that you guys have an open mind and are able to base your decision on the evidence presented and applicable law. Commissioner Moss?
Cannonwell.
Cannonwell?
Cannonwell.
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 All right. At this time, we'll open the public hearing, and I'm going to ask the clerk to swear in all witnesses collectively, so anybody in the audience that's going to speak, or in the room in general that's going to speak on this item, please rise to be sworn in.
Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
All right. Wonderful. With that, we will start with the presentation by county staff. Welcome.
Good morning, Madam Chair and Commissioners. For the record, Patrick Murphy, Senior Planning, with the Planning and Development Services. As the Madam Chair mentioned, this is for the Community Baptist Church K-12 private school, so it's a special exception use and site plan approval. On the location map, you'll see on each of these slides, true north is actually the top left corner of the page. The school is outlined in a red square. It's on the south side of Roseland Road, about a mile to the west or south of US-1. To the south of that is Sebastian. There's RS-3 single-family residential zoning on, on the east and the west, and RS-1 single-family residential zoning across the street to the north. On an aerial map, you'll see how the facility is currently laid out. The large gray box to the east is the church facility itself. The building that is outlined in red is actually a multipurpose building that they're going to be converting into the school, so they're not creating a new building, they're just repurposing one that's already there. There's a pastor residence to the north side of the page and some other miscellaneous structures. You see an existing home to the top of the page as well, and Roseland Road to the left There are existing ninety-nine parking spaces on the site, of which the church is required to have sixty-seven, and it's a fifty-six requirement for the school. However, the school and the church operates at different times. The school's going to operate Monday through Friday, eight-thirty to three-thirty, and the church operates Wednesday evenings and Sundays, so they don't overlap and they won't be competing for any parking spaces. For the traffic circulation plan, there's only the one driveway onto Roseland. They're going to make a couple of improvements to the turning radius of the flares, if you will, that come out of the driveway. There is not going to be a dedicated drop-off loop. The pastor has decided that it was going to be a lot better to have all of the parents park in a parking space and walk their children in the school, which should take out any issues with possible queuing and any backing up towards the road. Again, you see the church on the blue outline, and then the schools in that red outline. Stormwater plan, all of the polygons you see shaded in blue are the existing ponds. It's all an interconnected system. However, they're not adding any new impervious to the site, so there's no reason to do any improvements to this. It's already functioning as it is. Takes us to the landscape plan. A Type C landscape buffer will be constructed along Roseland Road and along all the residential properties to the north and east. They have existing vegetation, and where there are gaps in that vegetation, they'll be planting new shrubs and trees. The dark green circles are existing oak trees of a pretty good size, and in the very northeast corner, they have a good stand of oaks that'll also remain. So the odd-shaped sort of pale green polygon at the south, that's an existing, very densely wooded vegetation. It's going to serve as sort of an enlarged buffer to that residential further to the south. Now noted along the very south side or the right side of your page, they're actually requesting a waiver from putting in a buffer along this property line that's allowed for them to request that through the code. And the reason being beyond that is a very large parcel of land that's jointly owned by the county and St. John's River Water Management District. It consists of both wetlands and uplands. There's no residential there, there's no buildings that are going to be there, so it doesn't really serve a purpose to plan all this landscaping, because there's nothing to buffer it from. So if the Board is inclined to approve this today, I would request that that be in the motion to make sure that that is memorialized. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval by unanimous vote. And for staff recommendation, staff recommends that the BCC grant special exception use and site plan approval for the Community Baptist Church K-12 private school with the conditions listed in the staff report. Those are, conditions are that a formal review of the life safety plan show which conducted by the county's building division, it must be approved prior to issuance of a change of occupancy permit to convert the existing multipurpose building into a school. A condition that the maximum student enrollment shall not exceed ninety students, and that's based on the size of the building in the Florida Building Code. And a condition that any future request to construct any new principal-use buildings or add outdoor lighting to any of the playfields will require special exception approval, both a review by the PZC and approval by this Board. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have, and I do believe the applicants are in attendance.
Fantastic. Commissioners, any questions of staff? Nope. All right. Seeing none, we'll move on to a presentation by the applicant. The applicant is here, is there anything? Welcome.
Thank you, guys, very much. I don't think I was fully aware of the amount of things that you guys oversee and do, and I want to thank you for your service to our community, and recognizing today that our issue is just a small issue in the middle of all the grand ones that you guys partake in. So again, thank you. My name is John Stevens, I'm the pastor of Community Baptist Church. Also, will be the president-headmaster of our future desire to have our school. About a year and a half ago, we really felt called by the Lord to start a school, and we're recognizing that there's a need as well in our community to have the option for private education. Many of our families within our church have asked us to do this for years, and we haven't, but we really feel like now's the time. Many of them, they would have to go all the way to South Vero to put their kids in a private school, to which they're finding many of those schools are full. And so we would love to provide that opportunity here, you know, on our side of the county. And we believe we're going to be a blessing to our community. We always have been as a church, that's our goal. It is never to be a burden, but to be a blessing. And we know that when we talk about starting a school, obviously, our minds automatically jump to major football fields in schools like Sebastian High School, but that is not our goal. We really want to focus on the quality of our impact on those students rather than the quantity. And so we are not stifled by the ninety, we're not discouraged by that. We believe that that number is perfectly fitting to what we desire to be as a school. We want to intimately connect with each family that comes into our facility, helping them, obviously, through education, but also growing in their faith in the Lord. And we believe that those two elements, putting their focus on Jesus Christ and raising them up in their education, is going to produce great citizens for our community here. We, again, want to be a blessing. We have been as a church. We, every week, we see hundreds of people come through our doors that we get to minister to. We have outreach opportunities for our community. We do annual trunk retreats where we see literally two thousand people come to that. All of our events are completely free. Last night, we hosted a dinner for two hundred and fifty people, where they can come and just enjoy fellowship. And for some, it's a matter of receiving dignity; for others, it's just a night off, and we want to be a blessing in that way. We've offered grief share to help those that are grieving the loss of loved ones. We offer divorce care, those that, families that are going through separation. Many times, we see them mended. We offer life recovery groups where we can help those that are struggling with the bondage of this life, helping them find freedom in those things. And again, so we believe our school is just going to be an extension of that opportunity for our community to find healing and hope and, and blessing. And so I really appreciate you guys taking the time today to consider our, our desire to start a K-12 school. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioners, any questions for the applicant? Nope. All right. At this time, we'll take any All right, at this time, we'll take any input from the public. If anybody from the public wishes to speak on this matter, please come to the podium and state your name and address for the record. Welcome.
Good morning, my name's Jeff Klein. Did you need my address?
Yes.
12525 Roseland Road.
Thank you.
Good morning. I made a few notes here of what I wanted to say. I did attend that meeting at the Planning and Zoning Commission, myself included. I don't have any problem with the school. I think the school's a wonderful idea. I'm here because I'm concerned about the traffic. I mentioned that at the county commission meeting. Mr. Murphy was there, he explained to me that, explained to everybody that, pardon me, the, there was no trigger to change the traffic. There wasn't enough traffic to require any amendments for this to happen. Okay, that's not an issue for me, but the traffic on Roseland in the morning now is thick. It's even thicker when the snowbirds are here. So, the immediate area is going to be impacted by this traffic from the school, and I just want to say that the pastor seems like a reasonable guy. I think we should use our common sense, and I recommend that there was nothing required by the church because nothing was triggered because of the traffic survey. But what I'm suggesting is that when students are being dropped off in the morning, that they come from 512, so they can make a right-hand turn straight into the church instead of coming from US-1 and stacking up because they can't make a left-hand turn into the church because the oncoming traffic is pretty thick. So, just, you know, in the afternoon, 3:30, not an issue. They can come from 512, they can come from US-1 because it's 3:30. Nobody's rushing to get out to go to work. The immediate area will be impacted in the morning as people try to go to work. So, that's my main concern. If the pastor could work with us and ask students to be dropped off coming from 512 versus US-1. Couple more things. The swell is very deep and wide on both sides of the road at that point, right where the homes are, my home, the homes next to me to the west, the church. The swell is very steep. You got a hospital a mile away. Emergency vehicles are running all the time. If, at 8:00 in the morning, if they're stacked up, I don't know where cars are going to go safely without concerns of getting in the swell, being able to pull over far enough to let an emergency vehicle go by. I think you should consider this. I'm not saying I'm against the school. Again, I'm just concerned about the traffic. Okay, another thing I want to say is, half a mile away, half a mile away, you got a train running 30 times a day. So you're going to get stacked up multiple places along the way. I'm just asking these folks to work with us. Another thing is, there's an alligator in the pond. I think that there's going to be some students, that first pond that was, that is closest to Roseland Road has an alligator in it, so I think they ought to get rid of it. Okay? And then the last thing is this. I spoke with a neighbor, several of my neighbors. They didn't get the letter to be informed that this meeting was taking place, and again, Mr. Murphy explained, got a 300-foot radius from the center of the church property to contact all those people that fall into that radius. So my own next-door neighbor, who is going to be impacted, didn't get the sign, and all those folks on 125th Place, which is the first street to the north of the church, east of the church towards US-1 on the north side of Roseland, all those folks are going to be impacted. They didn't get a letter. So, then I talked to another fellow who lives two houses away on the west side of the church, on the south side of Roseland. He didn't get a letter. So, I'm just thinking that, I don't know how these rules and regs work for Indian River County, but a lot of these people that live immediately near this church were not contacted. The next thing I want to say is, in talking to one of my neighbors, he said, "Well, I thought they were supposed to post a sign." And I brought this up at the last meeting, and there was no conversation whatsoever at the Planning and Zoning Commission. The sign that's posted is 17 inches by 11 inches. The sign is this big. It's covered in plastic. Speed limit is 45 miles an hour right there in front of the church. You can't read that sign. Mr. Murphy explained, "That's all this county requires." I'm saying to you folks, I don't think it's right. When a sign can't be read with an important issue like this, sign's not big enough. And then the plastic, when you're driving, I went by it yesterday when I was coming home, and I specifically looked at the sign. The plastic kind of shines from the sunlight, you can't read anything. I went there, I stood in the parking lot, I was 10 feet away. I could barely read the sign, stopped from 10 feet away. So in the future, I just recommend the county make bigger signs when you're going to have an issue like this. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Klein. We can certainly look at the signage issue moving forward. Mr. Murphy, what, when would the traffic be triggered?
Okay, thank you. I was taking notes here, and I'll go ahead and address them in sort of the order that they were spoken. So, Chapter 952, which is our traffic section, requires a traffic study when a minimum of 400 average daily trips from particular proposed use is going to be created from the site. For this type of facility, the K-12 school, we took a look at the IT Trip Generation Manual. It's the latest manual. IT stands for Institute of Transportation Engineers, and they look at and then conduct traffic studies throughout the state, throughout the country, on particular uses, cobble those together, and they come up with factors, meaning you have a certain average daily trip assigned to each use. This particular use, when you took that factor and you multiplied it by its maximum at build-out that it could possibly have at 90 students, it only yielded 232 trips a day. So it was far below the minimum threshold it needed to actually require a traffic study. Public Works staff looked at this and looked at the frequency of trips that may be coming to the site, and did not deem this necessary to do any types of turn lanes or any types of improvements. Now, I think that it may be a little misconception that when you hear 90 students, that 90 cars are all going to arrive on the site in the same five-minute period of time, and that's really not how these schools operate. What you'll get is, you'll get a lot of siblings that travel in a car, you'll get folks that show up at different times in the morning, and so the traffic's not going to stack as bad as you might think it is. There's going to be intervals to come in and to and out of the site, and this is, you know, this is not a very big school at all. I mean, 90 students at build-out, which I don't think they're going to even hit in the first few years, is not something that our traffic engineers found too much of a concern. As far as the radius, the 300-foot radius right out of Section 902, that's from the outer property lines. Now, in this area, these are larger-sized properties. Some of these are acre, two acres. So if you were to take this site and put it in, say, VLE with a bunch of quarter-acre lots, and you put that radius out, you would hit multiple, multiple properties. But on this particular site, I think it yielded about 24 different properties within that 300-foot. The radius map, it curves and it ebbs and flows with the size of the property, so we followed all the regulations, we notified all the folks. There was a sign placed on the property before the Planning and Zoning Commission as well as the Board of County Commissioners. The plastic is on there to make sure the rain doesn't wash the writing off. We can certainly look in the future at larger signage, driving down 45 miles per hour, I don't know what sign you would, size you would need to be able to read that while driving. The understanding is that you would pull off to actually get out and safely read that sign, so, you know, you're not getting in rear end while you're trying to read a sign. But we can certainly look at those things. As far as the alligator, I would hope that the pastor would, you know, call animal control and remove that for everyone's safety. And the deep swell, that's something that would be a maintenance item that Public Works would need to look at because it's a public road right away, it's not something that the church is responsible for maintaining. I think I covered all of those, but if you have any follow-up questions, certainly.
I do.
Okay. Commissioner Ayrman?
Let's say that the school becomes highly successful, their attendance increases, they need to build another building or multiple buildings, whatever they would need to do, does it trigger in traffic studies and stuff like that in the future?
Yes, we would evaluate that at that time to see how many more students we're putting in. If it gets to that 400, we would require, even if it didn't, Public Works was going to take a look at the new impact that could be felt along the roadway from however many buildings they're going to put in, and would look at whatever improvements may be needed at that time. We would also evaluate this school as it is after it's open to see if there is any impacts that may be created and what we can do to alleviate those.
Okay. Other questions?
Madam Chair, does the, just curious, does the church in the future plan on any busing opportunities for the children? In other words, they may have a bus already, is there any plans to pick up children and mitigate the traffic flow?
No, at this time, we do not have any plans for that. And I do want to say regarding the alligator, there is no alligator in our pond at this time. We've had one in my seven years as the pastor there called Wildlife, they removed it. And so, we would look at that pond every single day because we don't just need to worry about it because we have a school. We have 80, 90 kids every weekend on our campus that we look for too, and so the second we notice that, we absolutely take care of it because we want to make sure that's removed. Also want to remind us that we are talking about 90 students maximum. We do not anticipate that we'll probably get to that number that fast, but we really honestly don't want a school bigger than 90, and I know that we can dream this big dream, but we really want to focus on the quality rather than the quantity. We really want to build into these individual students, and that is our desire here today. So, just wanted to say those things.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Fleischer?
Just, so, in hearing that, Madam Chair, Pastor just made a target as to how much, how many students he would anticipate in attendance. Is that the number you used to calculate the traffic concerns, or did you go to a higher value?
So, when we look at the concerns, we look at what the maximum could potentially be. We do not take a number from the applicant and say, "Well, we're only looking at 50 students" and then do a study based on that. We would do it based on the maximum they could put in that building. The building's roughly 4,000 square feet, and when you take out the bathrooms and the hallways and the conference room, administration room, the amount of students that could physically be accommodated in there is 90. The Florida Building Code would not allow any more than that. So we take that maximum number, and that's what we're studying because you have to look at what could be the worst-case scenario, so to speak, when you're doing traffic studies. Thank you.
And I did hear you say that after it's opened, we'll continue to review that.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, if I could, Madam Chair, members of the Commission, Ryan Sweeney, Assistant Planning Development Services Director. One thing we find a lot with these schools is operational items. You learn over time. I can promise you, the first day will probably be a little rough. Every, every school is. People are going every which way and whatnot. Within a week, they tweak it, they say, "Hey, K-5 gets dropped off between these hours", you know, "6 through 8 gets dropped off." It's a working process, and it takes a week or two to figure out, and you tweak it over time, and that's how that usually gets streamlined. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, anybody else from the public wishing to speak on this item? Seeing none, we will move on to the final presentation by county staff. Any final presentation? It's okay to say no.
No, thanks.
Okay. Any final presentation by the applicant? No? All right. All right, have all documents and tangible evidence been admitted into evidence with the clerk? I'm assuming yes, and, all right, with that, we'll close the public hearing.
Madam Chair, move approval.
Second.
All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Lohr with a second by Commissioner Fleischer. Any further discussion?
Madam Chair, I just want to say to Pastor and thank you, staff, for rolling this through the way you did, and answering our concerns, but to Pastor, you know, at a time when, and I, I don't know if it shows, but I attended faith-based schools. You know, sometimes it takes, sometimes it doesn't. But with that, I think it's very important, you'd be commended to want to move forward, to drive forward for a faith-based school at a time when most faith-based schools are not growing in abundance, and I think I heard the concerns. Mr. Klein, I appreciate your, the input. I think staff has addressed the concerns, or will be addressing the concerns, and they'll be continue monitoring until successful. I hope that you fulfill every one of your desires to fill this school, so, thank you.
Madam Chair?
Yeah, I was going to ask, does the motion cover everything that you needed?
Yeah.
Yes, I just wanted to confirm for the record that it did, it also covered their request for relief from landscaping on that south property line. Thank you, thank you very much.
Okay.
And so, yes.
All right, so there's a motion by Commissioner Lohr with a second by Commissioner Fleischer. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Best of luck.
All right, with that...
Excuse me, I just wanted to thank you guys again. I want to thank county staff, they helped us tremendously get through this. I appreciate you all very, very much. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, with that, we are going to move on, and I'm going to take just a brief moment of chair's privilege to give some time to the administrator and the attorney. Go ahead.
Yes, Kylie, could you come forward? I just want to take an opportunity to introduce Kylie Antula to the Commission. I know many of you have meetings scheduled for her, but also to the, to the community. Kylie joins Indian River County as our Natural Resources Director. She previously spent the last eight years surveying Martin County as their Public Works Administrator, where she oversaw field operations, stormwater, mosquito control within the Public Works Department. Prior to Martin County, Kylie was a research entomologist studying mosquito interactions with different viruses at the Florida Medical Entomology Lab on Oslo Road. And a kind of a fun fact, just the most interesting place Kylie has lived was in Front Royal, Virginia, at the Smithsonian Conservation Biology Institute, where she saw endangered species like red pandas, maned wolves, and cheetahs every morning and hiked on the Appalachian Trail every afternoon. She holds a Masters in Science and Environmental Sciences and a PhD in Entomology, and we are so glad that she's here as our new Natural Resources Director, and so we just want to welcome you, Kylie, to the Indian River County team, family, and we look forward to great things from her.
Yes, welcome, and based on that resume, I mean, I hope you find us as dazzling as some of the experiences you've had in the past, but definitely looking forward to having you onboard. I've only heard great things. I think Martin County is still a little upset with us for, I'll use the term we use in the restaurant business, poaching you from them, but I'm glad to have you on our team, and we're looking forward to doing anything we can to help you move that department forward.
Well, I just want to say thank you to all of you for having me. I'm really excited, so today is day six, and based upon these six days, I have found that you have a phenomenal team, and there is a lot of depth there, so I'm really looking forward to supporting the department and also making your visions of reality towards the environmental stewardship of Indian River County. So thank you for having me, and I'm looking forward to meeting with everyone and learning a little bit more about you and some of your priorities.
Fabulous.
Thank you, welcome.
Thank you, welcome. Mr. DeBraal?
Thank you. Shannon, why don't you take a step forward, please? We've got a summer intern, Shannon Gordon. Shannon comes to us from George Mason Law School in Washington, DC. She is here by, by her own choice, but she's also supplemented by a grant from the local government section of the Florida Bar, so we're pleased that we're going to be able to send her back for her third year, the third and final year at law school up at George Mason, and we're very excited to have her here. She's going to be attending lots of meetings and seeing lots of different things. We'll try and expose her to as much as possible to enrich her life as far as when she goes back, and hopefully she has good stories to tell.
Yes, we are an enriching bunch, so welcome. We hope you have a fantastic summer and learn a lot, and we'll try to be as exciting as possible for you.
Thank you, I'm already really excited, so...
Wonderful, we'll welcome aboard.
Thanks.
Where exactly are you from?
Alexandria, Virginia, but yeah, I've lived here a while, but now I'm back up in Arlington.
Arlington. Counselor, is the old adage of where you intern an indication of where you... Counselor, is the old adage of where you intern an indication of where you might land?
She has stated that she wants to come back to Indian River County after she's done with school, so you never know what happens.
I just wanted to just point out a few things.
Oh, yeah, I'll be back.
Wonderful.
Welcome aboard.
Welcome.
Thank you, Shannon.
All right, with that, we will move on to human resources. Item 12C1, Indian River County Everside Health Center, six-month update and request for approval of additional staffing and direct contract for radiology services. That is quite a mouthful. Welcome, Suzanne.
It was quite a mouthful. Good morning, commissioners, and thank you for this opportunity to give you an update on our Indian River County Everside Health Center. Back in February of 2023, the board approved us entering into an agreement with Everside to open a health center for our employees, our retirees, our dependents over the age of two, for not only the Board of County Commissioners, but all the constitutional offices as well. And the total population of insureds is about thirty-six hundred lives. In the radius that we thought would serve the health, would be able to visit the health center, we were looking at like thirty-two hundred and twenty-two lives total. So, following the approval of the board, we executed our agreement with Everside, and then we sought out a location for the health center. We sought out a place that would be convenient. There was concern expressed at that time, or some guidance that was given by the board. You were concerned about the quality of the facility. You wanted it to be a high-quality facility. You wanted it to be in a location that was convenient. You wanted it to be a professional representation for healthcare services in a real building for, for serving this population of, of these employees and their dependents. And we were successful in being able to do that, and we launched the opening of the health center at the end of October. And in November, we had our open house, and I'm pleased to say that after six months, there's some requests that I have for you at this time related to that health center. So, Kim, would you be able to open it up? A little. Okay, so this is our wellness update. These are some shots of our actual facility, and it just shows the level of professionalism that went into designing and building out this facility. The total build-out cost was about a hundred and forty-four thousand to be able to get this facility up to speed, to be able to meet the needs of our population. We have several exam rooms. We started off with one nurse practitioner, two medical assistants. It's very close to the hospital. It's off of Thirty-seventh in a, in a great location. And our partnership with Everside, they have a care model that we believe is going to be very successful for our population. Our utilization, there was a concern expressed by the board that are people going to go to this health center? So, the good news is, people are going to this health center. We've had over a thousand and sixty-nine appointments in the six months that it's been open. We have four hundred and ten patients who have established relationship with the health center. That's about sixteen percent among our eligible population have already connected in this short period of time. We've had some in-depth physicals have been received by a hundred and eighty-four of those patients. We've accommodated same-day, next-day visits. Twenty-seven percent of the visits have been same-day or next-day, and we have even the ability to have virtual appointments. So, what's really cool about this is you can go in, get your physical, get your labs drawn at the same time, and then that follow-up appointment that you might have had to go actually to the doctor's office and wait, we can do it virtually to go over labs and with the, with the provider. So, it's, it's really a great, great benefit, and that utilization is, is steadily rising. You can see on the screen how the appointments have just consistently gone up, up, and up. We have about nine point two percent of the population of spouses and four point five percent among dependents. So, we're really encouraged by these numbers and this trend that's moving up. Out of the total appointments, it's, it's, what's wonderful about this is we have like seven hundred and fifty-three of our appointments have been employee appointments. And if you think about the time that when you, when you're working and you have to take off to go to the doctor, how much time it actually takes, maybe you take a whole, you know, half-day off, or the morning off, or the afternoon off to get to the doctor, you go, you might have to wait in the waiting room, and it's a different experience with our health center. You are really close by, you know, right off Thirty-seventh, you can get in, you don't have to wait. You get in, you get registered, you get taken back, you get seen. So, we're estimating that at least an hour is saved on lost productivity for just those seven hundred and fifty-three employee visits that have been there. And if you, and, you know, quantify that with an average salary rate, you can see that that's, that's a savings in and of itself. We have a really high net promoter score. You'll see that ours is eighty-nine, and you can see some other brand names that are very well-known how we compare to that. So, people are very satisfied with Everside. Some of the comments that are here, these are actual comments from our, our members that go, and there's a whole lot more, but we couldn't fit them all on one, one screen. So, we have just hundreds of positive comments about the experience that people have been receiving when they go to the health center. The care is very convenient. This shows you the percentage of same-day, next-day appointments. And I want to let you know, we actually block two, since January, we've been blocking two hours out of each day to accommodate same-day, next-day appointments. But I really want to emphasize here, this is a health center. It's not a walk-in clinic. It's not intended to be that, although a portion of our visits are set aside for that because we realize that sometimes people wake up in the morning and the child's sick, or you're not feeling well, and you want to get in. So, we do have those two hours blocked for same-day, next-day, but if we don't, if those aren't taken, we try to get people in for their wellness appointments. And those appointments are in-depth physicals, time with a provider. And ever, the Everside team was sending me, sharing with me some statistics. The average general practice visit, if you go into a doctor's office, you know, about nine point seven minutes is how much time that provider's going to spend with you. Forty-one minutes is what somebody's getting when they go to this health center. On average, forty-one minutes of one-on-one time with that health provider to actually talk with you and identify what your health goals are and work with you to kind of improve in the areas that might be very specific to you. And I can't go into all the details, but I can tell you that I know personally of people who have gone there and have come back and said, they took the time and they found out about this thing in my life, and they made some recommendations for me, and I have been, I have had an improvement as a result of that. So, this support that you've put toward this health center has been very positive, and I think we're just going to see that over time as we, as we move along. One of our realities that we're facing is because our utilization is high and our utilization is strong, it's taking a little bit longer to get in and be seen. So, the average wait time is nineteen point four days to get your physical scheduled, which is still really good. I mean, I don't know if you've called a, I mean, nineteen point four days is really good because other places, it's like months out before you can get in. So, we're still doing really good, but again, we want to make it really, really easy and convenient for people to get in, to be seen, to stay healthy and productive, and to have their families healthy and productive as well. So, we are at capacity. We've been at capacity since we opened up the door. People, I mean, I was actually in the lobby, we were talking to some folks who said they were the first, on the first people that, that day one, you know, that they were open for business, they were actually in there. So, that, that was really good. We did a good side, good job communicating because we can see right out of the gate, people are going. Now, under our agreement with Everside, the agreement was, hey, if you're at sixty-six percent or above, we're going to be recommending to you that you add another practitioner. And you might be, well, gosh, you've been at sixty cent, sixty-six or above since you opened, why did you wait? Well, they didn't want it to be an anomaly. They didn't want it to drop off and add a provider too soon, so they wanted to get six months' worth of utilization under our belt to say, yep, the trend is there, and this is time. Some more good news. Operational costs are tracking our estimates. So, this first tall bar, that's the startup cost. Remember, I said we spent about a hundred and forty-four thousand dollars in startup costs? I may not have spoke it, but it was up here to open up the health center. It took a little bit of time to actually find a location, and then the expenses related to the build-out, so it was a little bit more than we initially projected. October, we were open at the last day of the month, so you're not going to see any savings from there, it was just an expense. But then, when you look at November, December, January, February, and March, green is what was budgeted, and then you can see that our charges are coming in below what was budgeted. To date, it's about, I want to say, three hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars in expenses beyond the initial startup costs. And what we've done is we have, separately, we pay rent through an Everside lease. That's running about sixty-three hundred dollars a month for our lease. So, those total costs, when you put it together, it's right around eight hundred thousand dollars annually are our total costs, and we are projected to, to fall in line with that. So, that's very good news as well. We do have some really good news regarding savings because one of our goals was to not only improve people's health, but also to save on our costs. So, the value of visits, you're going to see here, and this is that number I referenced before, nine point seven minutes is the normal average duration of primary care. Our visits are forty-one minutes, they're higher quality, but when you put a cost of a hundred and seventeen dollars for that average nine point seven-minute visit, you're looking at five hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars in the value of total visits that we're delivering through this health center. Referrals, this is another thing that happens is if the Kathy, our provider, decides that you need to be referred to a specialist, she's going to do so, but she does so after spending that time. It's not just pushing you through and getting you referred on and where you have to go and pay another co-pay to go see a doctor. A lot of it is just addressed with that longer visit where she's able to help you get on track with your healthcare needs. But if it's necessary, there's going to be a referral to a specialist. But our referral rates are going to be lower because, again, we're not just pushing somebody through getting a co-pay, we're looking at the quality of that visit. Does that make sense? So, we're saving money there. The average referral savings cost is looking at like close to sixty thousand dollars in reduced referrals. Then we have emergency room and urgent care avoidance. We had two hundred and eighty-nine same-day, next-day appointments. Those, a percentage of that is, is looking at, we avoided the ER, we avoided, avoided urgent care, and those costs, so we're looking at an avoidance of almost twenty-eight thousand dollars for the ER and urgent care avoidance in just that six-month period. Then we have member savings. There's, remember, this health center operates, you have no co-pay, no, no cost for your prescriptions that are, that are delivered out of there. So, the person goes, they don't have to pay anything when they get there, and we're estimating that to be forty-one thousand dollars in just this six-month period for these members who have gone and sought services through the health center. So, overall, we're looking at just under six hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars of total savings to include that forty-one thousand of member savings. So, when we look back to what is our, what are our billed expenses been? It was like three hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars as compared to our diverted costs and member savings. We're doing really, really well on our ROI, so I'm pleased to report that to you. And this is just another way to illustrate it, where we're at. All right, now we're going to be looking at adding a nurse practitioner. You might think, well, why a nurse practitioner? Well, you can kind of see the difference in cost between a physician and a nurse practitioner. So, we believe that the nurse practitioner is delivering a high-quality level of care for our members. Not only that, they have access to physician oversight, the ability to tap in and, and speak with a physician regarding any, any questions that might come up through Rubicon MD. So, they have access to a lot of resources beyond just that nurse practitioner in the office. Through Everside, they have access to a lot of information and a lot of resources. Any questions so far with the, where we're at? Doing good? Okay, another thing that we're looking at doing, and we're very excited about this, and many of you may not know this, but a lot of our area physicians and our imaging has been, has become, they've been acquired by the hospital, and we have seen an uptick in additional costs that are being charged to our members, and it's very, very frustrating, and, and we have no ability, under our agreement with Health First and our health plan, to cause that to be a different experience for our members. And so, when I was talking with Everside about it, I said, is there any way we can get a direct contract for radiology services through this health center so that a member can be referred for radiology, have it covered under that health center expense, without going to through the health plan, without the frustrations that members are experiencing and that? And they said, yes. So, they are currently working with Indian River Radiology. They've actually contacted a few, but Indian River Radiology came back with the best overall pricing, but we're still working through some of those nuances just to make sure that it's not only a more efficient way of getting our members to the radiology care kind of seamlessly, but that it's also the cost, we're keeping it down. So, under this agreement, we're looking at overall savings of about twenty-two thousand dollars for radiology services being delivered this way as opposed through the health plan. Do you have any questions about that?
I just have a comment that whoever you end up with for radiology, try to make sure that you can get an appointment with them before like six months to a year. I mean, it's really ridiculous out there.
Yes. So, and that's one of the things that I've asked Everside. I want that partnership and that referral process to be Everside coming alongside the member and helping get that referral taking place. Rather than today, what happens is you get a referral and, and you go home and, and you wait maybe for a phone call sometime a few days later. So, Everside is aware, and they will facilitate that, that process in the health center itself, and the two medical assistants assisting with getting those, those things done. And nothing locks us in to a forever relationship with Indian River Radiology if that's who we ultimately end up with. We will look for the cost-effective relationship that makes sense and supports our members in, in meeting those very goals that you stated. Any other questions related to that? We have another little issue here. Under our agreement with Everside, we have what's a performance guarantee, and it's related to having a percentage of our eligible members have that annual physical and that wellness check because that's where we're really going to make a difference, not just in the overall expense and diversion, but hopefully bending the curve of chronic conditions for our members by getting them in and getting them, their labs done and their, that, that relationship, that forty-one-minute one-on-one discussion about that person's health, and hopefully avoid costly chronic conditions or, or those, those conditions that can arise when somebody's not going to the doctor. So, we have a performance guarantee in place, but we were reading it as we were going through this process, and it says fifty percent of enrollees, under our current agreement, it needs to be fifty percent of eligible members, which are people who have connected with the health center. Does that make sense? So, instead of fifty percent of the thirty-two hundred people, it's fifty percent of the people who have connected with the health center are going to be expected to have met those performance guarantees related to the, the annual physical. Micah, did I state that correctly?
At the end, yes.
Yes, okay, at the end. Any questions on that? All right. All right, then another big deal. Everside is merging with Marathon Health. Marathon Health has a presence in Brevard County, I think it is, and so that partnership will bring a lot more resources to us as, as Everside and Marathon merge together. I was like looking at this, and I was like, but I really like our green, you know, I really like that green color and not so much the other one. So, the good news is we get to keep the green, right? There may be some branding that happens down the road related to this, but it's, I've been assured that it doesn't impact us, right? We're good? Okay. Okay, we're good. Any questions on the merger?
Just one. Is Marathon affiliated with Stewart Health in any way?
So not to my knowledge.
Okay.
But I can certainly take that back.
No, no problem. Thank you.
Okay. All right. This is just a statement regarding their strategic alignment. They really believe that they complement, each company complements and will broaden and give us even more depth of support than we already have today, I think, through that merger. Any questions on that? All right. So what am I asking for today? It's good things. I'm asking for good things. I am asking for approval to employ an additional nurse practitioner so that we can provide our services to our workforce. That would result in a staffing of two nurse practitioners and two medical assistants. I'm asking for approval for Everside to enter into a direct contract for radiology and imaging services, with the pricing to be reviewed by Lockton and staff for competitiveness. So we don't have that pricing locked in yet, but I'm asking for approval, once we're good, that we can go ahead and start referring people to receive radiology and imaging services, and it'd be billed as a pass-through expense through the health center. And it would be no out-of-pocket cost to the members who are going to get those services. And then I'm asking for approval to start, once we have that agreement, for those referrals to begin through the health center, for patients who are coming there who might need a x-ray or a CT or an MRI for a medical condition. And then I'm authorizing the chairman to execute any necessary amendment to the agreement with Everside to implement the authorized changes. That will include the modification of the language related to that performance guarantee to reflect that it's not eligible employees, but it's enrollees, right? Okay. Following review by Lockton, staff, and the county attorney for legal sufficiency. Thank you.
All right. Commissioners, questions, comments, concerns? Commissioner Moss?
Yes, I have a couple of questions. Adding another nurse practitioner, will that affect my notes here, 15.5 days you have to wait? That's the waiting time to get an appointment? Will that come down?
Yes. Because we'll be able to see more people.
Okay, so that will, that will come down. Is it currently 10% participation by the employees? That's what I thought went by. And that's...
16% of our employees.
16%?
Yes.
Of our employees? So everyone's eligible, right? So eligible is total number of employees. So of the total number, 16% of our employees are using this. And when you compare savings, because I know you had, the language was primary care visits. A primary care, are you comparing nurses to nurses, or are you comparing nurses to doctors?
So primary care visits, at least my experience has been, a lot of nurse practitioners in these facilities are providing the primary visits. You might have a physician there, but they are supplemented by nurse practitioners, and many times you'll go in and you'll see a nurse practitioner as well. So that, that primary care visit could be with a doctor, it could be with a nurse practitioner, but the cost is the $117. And, correct?
So we're actually using the ICD-T.
This is Tiffany Comby?
Cumby.
Cumby. Tiffany, if you'll...
So we actually, the way that we do the savings is we actually are utilizing like the ICD-T 10 codes, the ICD-10 codes. So we're actually comparing them. So what happens is in our health centers, our providers document the exact same way that they would if they were in a community-based center. So that's how we can actually assign a value to the visits that are happening in our center if you were to correlate them to happen in a primary care setting where it's truly fee-for-service, where they're invoicing back to the insurance plan for reimbursement. So that's how we're able to calculate that. And to Suzanne's point, oftentimes, it is nurse practitioners. And we do have some primary cares where they are M.D.s, but oftentimes, it's a nurse practitioner model. There's no different value assigned to that visit type, depending upon who's providing it for reimbursement.
I don't know, I've never heard of that. If I make a doctor's appointment, I see the doctor. I don't see a nurse, so I don't know. I don't know about this oftentimes, but I'm not going to dispute it. Okay, thank you.
Yes.
I'll wait to follow up with commissioners.
Any other commissioners have any questions?
Madam Chair, I don't have any. I'm fine with this, and I'm very pleased with the success.
Wonderful.
One thing to note is that our retirees that are eligible, and correct if I'm wrong, once they get Medicare age, they're no longer participants.
Actually, if someone chooses to remain on our health plan
Right.
after age 65, they can still continue at this health center.
Okay.
Madam Chairman?
Yes.
I agree with you. I'm too pleased, I'm very pleased with the results, because I know that when I was still with the fire rescue department, we had discussed this many years ago, and it finally came to fruition, and we're glad to see it's being run so well, and the quality's there, and the facility's very nice. So yes, job well done. I think we need to keep letting the employees and the constitutional offices keep knowing more and more that this is available to them, and I think we'll even see better results. So thank you.
Separately, it's not in my agenda item, but we do have our health fair that will be coming up in the middle of August, and we're partnering with Everside. They are going to be doing the biometrics, the labs. So we expect to get about 250 lab draws onsite in the 501(c) room. We'll set that up for that purpose. And then the Everside team is going to be there to help the employees register and become registered members of the health center and get scheduled. So we're actually, we have a strategy in place to encourage folks and make it really, really easy to get registered and get an appointment.
Fabulous.
I think if that was done on the onset, that your numbers would have far exceeded what they are today. I think the element of participation was guided by not being registered first, and then going, and then having to go back and make another appointment. And I think your numbers might have been quite large, because we hear nothing but positive about the environment. And we hope that it's not going to change. I hear great things about Marathon as well, and I know they're another area provider that the facility will not alter. This is merely a business understanding and for enhancement for service, and not a change.
Exactly. And what I'm really pleased about is the Everside team that we're working with. They understand what we value, and we make it really clear what we value. We value high quality. We value not rushing people through. I mean, I can't, over and over again, people said, I don't feel like a number. I feel like I'm a person, like I'm heard, like I'm seen, and that's exactly what we want, and we don't want to lose that. We want to maintain that through this relationship. And they know. They're on board with that for us.
I will tell you that a number of employees, and we can't identify them for obvious reasons.
Right.
But they have contacted or even just crossed paths and said, what an experience.
Oh, wonderful, wonderful. That's great.
It's definitely been a positive move.
Well, thank you for your support, because it would not have been possible without your support. So thank you.
Commissioner Moss?
Yes, thank you. So we are currently at 16% participation rate by employees. What is your expectation in the next six to 12 months in terms of the percentage of participation? Where are we going with this?
Could I?
And it's the second question, because I don't think I heard it today, and if I did, please repeat it.
Sure.
What is the cost per patient?
So the cost per patient would be, well, if you took the 410 patients and the 356,000, I suppose, you could say the cost per patient, but it's really...
Kind of vary.
It's going to vary based on what the...
Number of visits.
Yeah, the number of visits, the level of visits. Is it an urgent care?
Well, average, because you know, at some point, it has to work financially.
Right.
You know, it has to, it has to show a true savings.
Right.
Because you have, you know, we have all these costs associated with it. It's probably, or it could be, too early to evaluate it on that basis.
Right.
But I think eventually, you'll want to evaluate it on that basis.
So could I just throw, and maybe you could throw that slide back up, because I think it's already demonstrating that we are on a trajectory of, you know, achieving a return on investment in the first one or two years. It's been my experience, and you know, I started one of these for employees when I was at another jurisdiction. I've been involved with this at four, my four stops in terms of, in my public service career over 25 years. So I think, you know, and there's the number right there, and even if you subtract the 41,000, you're still looking at, what, 600 and, oh...
16.
Thank you. $616,000, you know, of diverted savings from what we would incur, you know, if through our normal program, I mean, by somebody going to their primary care physician. They're going to bill, you know, everybody's paying their co-pay, but also, they're going to bill a larger amount to the insurance company, and we're diverting and reducing those costs. Now, in terms of the participation, it's been my experience, and that it's the word of mouth, yes, the health fair will help, but the word of mouth, in terms of the patient experience that people are going through, will enhance our participation rate. And I think with the additional person, you know, staff member, that will be able to enhance the timeliness. And because when you call, and I can tell you, when I first got here, I tried to get in with a primary care, and they said, that was in April, and they said, well, we can see you in January. Kid you not, to start a new relationship. And so, I mean, so when you call and you make that, and you're able to get in even within 15 days, and then we also, I've been benefited recently of like being able to get on the same-day, next-day appointment. So I would just say that I would expect, as with many of the, this is a very similar model, but it's not, it's just 16% of our primary, our employees, but we also have 9.2% of their spouses are visiting the health center, and 4.5% of dependents. So it goes beyond that, because they are on our insurance plan as well. And I guess this, what we're asking is to continue, and I think we've demonstrated to, that we are, want to provide high-quality healthcare services to our employees, while at the same time, and importantly, manage our long-term healthcare costs so that it results in a benefit to our employees, as well as exercising sound financial stewardship for our taxpayers.
Madam Chair, if I can add, when we look at this long range, let's say, four or five years from now, and we plan on it being successful, and I think the administrator can help me with this, that has the potential of lowering our claims rate with Blue Cross. That doesn't mean Blue Cross is going to go down, but maybe it'll level off instead of the rates that we're seeing. So we have to be patient to watch these numbers, and keep in mind that we're still paying Blue Cross a lot.
Well, and I think the whole reason that we started this was because those numbers were rising, those claims numbers were rising, to the point, you know, that it was starting to become a problem, and we tried to come up with a strategy to help minimize those over the long term. And one of the things that we talked about was providing an environment where our employees and their dependents and spouses can go before there's a problem, because a lot of our employees do not have any kind of healthcare or medical home where they go and have these ongoing, you know, physicals and looking at things, you know, there are ways to treat diseases and illnesses, you know, just taking diabetes as an example. If you can catch somebody before they're diabetic in the pre-diabetic stage, or even when they have become diabetic, and give them tools to try to mitigate weight or mitigate sugar intake, or whatever the case may be, and you are checking in with them, that means that they're not going to have some kind of major medical issue that requires them to go to the hospital or be on large-scale prescription drugs, and that keeps our costs down. So that was kind of the goal. I think even at the six-month mark, you're almost, the savings has almost outweighed what the startup costs are. So I would assume, if that trend continues, once we're in a year, we'll well have paid for the startup cost and saved ourselves and our program a bunch of money. And I would assume, as Commissioner Laura says, that trend continues over time, it just keeps those costs down, and that's taxpayer dollars that aren't going in to fund our medical expenses.
And another thing that, it's, until you go through it, you don't realize the value. But when you're going through a medical situation, and it's hard to get an appointment, and it's hard to get in to get your imaging done, and then there's claims that come in, and then you're having to fight with whoever related to all of this, that impact to that person who's also working for you, and the time that they're spending in that frustration it's causing that family to go through that experience, it's painful. It's painful. And what I love about this is it's not, it's painless. It's pain-free. It's easy. It's, they walk out with their, you know, maybe they have an upper respiratory thing going on, and here's your prescription, and, you know, we'll re-check you in a week. And they can do it virtually, and so it's getting them back to work, it's taking away that stress of, now I've got to go to the pharmacy, and now I've got to wait and, you know, have somebody pick it up, because I can't take any more time away from work, I got to get back. There's just so much value that is beyond just the claims diversion, that now our employees are experiencing, a very, very positive thing. And it is, as the county administrator pointed out, it is a great benefit now for our employees.
You got it, Suzanne. You know, if, we can't turn this into a bank statement assessment at this point. We have to maintain our focus on patient care and employee service. That was the original intent. I don't believe that our insurers will then take the time, hey, you opened up a center, let's give you a better rate, right off the bat. It's going to take time, we're going to have to prove, and they're going to see a reduction in numbers. I think it's going to pay off exponentially up the road, as Commissioner pointed out. It may take a few years. It may be year three, year five, where they say, wow, your burden upon our system is greatly reduced because you have this facility. So I think we'd be falling short if we start talking about cost benefit and analyzing to that value. If that was done in any other endeavor, it would probably fail on the first year, as many small businesses do. You can't look at, you can't look at the bank statement at first.
Commissioner Ahrman?
Mr. Fleischer, I completely agree. Well said. Commissioner Laura, same thing. It's just the right thing to do. Period. Yeah, that's all. It's just the right thing to do. So you have a motion to say?
Oh, okay. I didn't realize that Commissioner Laura made a motion. I'm sorry.
Yeah, I have a motion in a second.
Okay, sorry. All right, any further discussion? There is a motion by Commissioner Laura with a second by Commissioner Fleischer. All in favor?
All right.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you for your support.
Thank you. Thank you, guys, for all that you're doing for our employees and their families. We appreciate it. All right, is there anything else for the good of the order?
You mean, it's done?
Well, almost.
Oh.
Yes.
When that happens, it's over.
Yeah. Anything else?
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Oh, I have one more thing. Sorry. Thank you for the reminder. This is June, so we will start our summer dress code. I know Commissioner Fleischer, it's his favorite time of year to dress more casually, but...
You're looking at it.
(laughing) Summer dress, everybody can, you know, dress down and be casual since it's the summer, and we'll go back to fancy dress in, I don't know, September generally. So with that, we stand adjourned.